All right. Call the meeting order, we do have a quorum tonight. Welcome everybody to the July 18th, 2016 Regular School Board Meeting. Rick, if you could walk us through the agenda, please?
Certainly will. Again, it's the summer meeting, so we have a lot of planning going on and it's a little bit of a lighter agenda. A variety of reports, talk a little bit about some of the work that's already occurred. There was a work session on June 14th where the board met and talked about some of their development work and had some training completed, as well as talk about next-gen EPS and some of the leadership planning going on in the district as they move through the summer. On July 18th, the board again met and talked a little bit about some of our strategic planning, a lot of that's going to be rolled out with action tonight, and then again a leadership update. And with that, we'll bring you forward for tonight's agenda. We'll be approving the minutes. We have a commendation from our girls' golf team that won its second state championship. We have a hearing from the audience, the consent agenda that we'll talk about in more detail as that comes about for action, many of those are routine items. Our report for the night is the leadership update, including on the May term. We'll talk a little bit about the wellness update and move into approving the leadership action plan for the upcoming year, been discussed for probably the last three meetings. Finally, the school board agenda, how that aligns to our leadership action plan, and then policy review. Action items tonight include some work agreements for some of our employee groups, as well as approving the long-term facility maintenance budget, which has been discussed at both the finance and facility committee, and then finally, policy review. And that would conclude tonight's meeting.
Great, thank you very much. We're going to start with approval of the minutes. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of June 13th, 2016, the work session of June 14th, 2016, and the special meeting of July 12th, 2016?
So move to second.
All right. Are there any changes to the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. The next thing is, we did have a work session on July 12th in which the school board met with Superintendent Rick Dressen to discuss his 2015-16 performance evaluation. That assessment was based on his performance goals, feedback from the community, staff, parents, colleagues, and as well as the overall performance of the school district. His performance was assessed in seven areas. One, governance. Two, planning and resource management. Three, staff relations and development. Four, student relations. Five, communications. Six, curricular and instructional leadership. And seven, evaluation. The school board found Superintendent Dressen to be exceeding performance expectations in all areas, which speaks not only to his efforts, but the efforts of lead team as well as the community. Specifically, the board identified several key strengths in Dr. Dressen's leadership work over the past year, including continued enhancement of a collaborative leadership model within the district, implementation and application of district policies, advancement of the district's strategic plan, especially as it relates to the next-generation construction plan, enhancement of the school district and community partnership, continued strength in the financial condition of the district, and continued focus on mental health and wellness. The board did identify a couple of growth areas for Dr. Dressen for the coming year. The first area is, we appreciate the work that's done by lead team and the superintendent in making recommendations to the board, and requested that the process and analysis be shared in greater detail with the board. And the second area is improved communications in areas where the community has expressed concern regarding district decisions. Dr. Dressen's consistent and effective leadership are key to the district's ability to promote the educational mission of the district. Overall, the board commends Dr. Dressen for his talents, skills, and passion in supporting and advancing our educational mission and the action priorities of the district. Thank you, Dr. Dressen.
Thank you. Appreciate the feedback and will again build my goals around the leadership work that's been identified and work with my colleagues to make that occur.
Great. We are going to skip recognition for a minute, give the recognized parties a chance to get here. That would take us to hearings from members of the audience. Sarah, do we have anybody? No? Great, thank you. The next then is the consent agenda. Is there anything that, and I want to note first on the consent agenda, that there is a typo under the board committee appointments. For Highland, I believe it says Lisa O'Brien, and it should say Sarah Patzloff, and so that's just a typographical error. So with that, is there anything that anybody wants removed from the consent agenda? Hearing none, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Actually, I have a, I just had a couple of questions about this community engagement software, and I don't, I don't know how to, is that a consent item or an action item?
Consent, action item. It's a consent item that essentially becomes action. So if you've got a couple of questions, I think our best path is to remove that and then just put that as an action item later on.
So move second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So that is E, which now becomes under, it will become action item D. All right, with that item removed, I think we already got a motion to approve the consent agenda, so we're going to count that as existing with that one item removed. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
We are missing names here. We need to go backwards, so she didn't get, I don't think we did.
I know, but we didn't.
Well, we didn't.
Oh, no. No. You didn't.
Oh, we didn't get a motion?
I'm sorry.
So move.
So move, a second.
Second.
All right. Now, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Motion carried. We'll go on to reports and discussion.
But we're going to have to review the tape to see what happens.
So we'll move into a leadership update and ask Mike Portaski and only Pus Terry to come forward and give us a quick update on the pilot project at the high school around May term. Thank you for coming in tonight.
Thanks. Thank you. Thanks for having us.
Grab a mic.
So let me find our presentation. On behalf of the high school, students, staff, I would like to thank the members of the board and Dr. Dressen once again for your support of May Term for All. It was a great experience for students and for our teachers and for just our growth towards next-gen work. So, thank you.
We'd like to start today by showing, if you have not seen, Jim Boy, sorry. If you haven't seen this video on-
Schools explored a variety of ways to keep students engaged and their interests peaked until the last day of school. At Edina High School, senior May Term and its recent addition, May Term for All, bring new year-end learning experiences and innovative programming to all EHS students. Come with us as we explore how these unique learning opportunities renew excitement for learning, increase engagement, and personalized learning in this edition of Next Gen News.
For the second year, Edina High School grade 10 and 11 students participated in the district's on-campus May Term for All program. May Term for All transforms the last six days of school into an inventive, personalized learning experience with over 100 mini-courses in content areas such as the arts, STEM, and career exploration. Classes allow students to choose learning opportunities that align with their interests, passions, and post-secondary transitions, allowing them to be ready for college, career, and life. For over 10 years, EHS seniors have had the opportunity to participate in Senior May Term, a nine-day self-directed learning experience in which students create, plan, and execute an educational project or career internship. Projects reflect the students' personality and interests and give them a hands-on opportunity to employ the skills and knowledge they have learned during their time at Edina Public Schools.
I traveled to Germany, Austria, Hungary, Slovakia, and the Czech Republic to study the effects of the Syrian refugee crisis on San Andreas.
I shadowed a criminal judge and had a good job.
In ninth grade, I was actually riding my bike and I broke my tire. So in ninth grade, I was like, that'd be kind of cool to ride a 3D bike.
The biggest thing is it just brought in my perception of the world, and I think it allowed me to see how different people live, which I think is a really important skill. And it definitely influenced, and made me more certain that I'm pursuing the right thing in college.
During the project, things happen, and it really comes down to being able to overcome those and work around some of the problems that come up in the project.
I would have to say that what I gained most was that I learned that I had to put in 100% of effort to gain 100% of enjoyment back.
At Edina High School, Senior May Term and May Term for All have transformed how students experience the last days of the school year. Unique, customized learning experiences provide new opportunities for students to engage and build on what they've learned in new and exciting ways. This innovative approach allows students to sample careers, learn new skills, collaborate with peers, and expand their understanding of the world and themselves, leaving them energized to continue learning far beyond their days in Edina Public Schools. Join us next time as we continue to explore how Edina Public Schools is changing to meet the needs of next-generation learners.
So the short film gives you a little bit of idea of what our last six days looked like for our students at Edina High School. It's very exciting. We had a, as with last year, we had a great variety of courses, had some high energy with students and staff. But just starting with Senior May Term, my guess is you're familiar with Senior May Term, but it is an opportunity for senior students to find a job, shadow or create, plan, and execute an educational project. So, just to give you a chance to take a look at some of our student testimonials from this year, and these are from our seniors.
And then, May Term for All. Do you need me to use this? Okay. May Term for All, our second year of May Term for All, which is our last six days of the school year, and this is where our staff came up with courses and students participated and signed up for classes in different areas, looking at STEM, global studies, health and communications. And it was really a six-day program for kids in which they participated in a four-block schedule. When you think about personalized learning and when we talk about our next-gen work, this is really an opportunity for kids, when we have the six-period day that we're locked into right now, at least with our 10 through 12 high school, it gives them a choice and a voice in their education. So our mission, which is right there, is to a wide variety of courses intended to allow students to explore their interests and learn in many different ways. These different ways include through the arts, through music, through movement, through building drones, through learning a skill and certification. When we started our planning and when we plan, we did talk to teachers, and when we do our planning, we wanted to look at these four learning areas, which I just talked about, the arts and communication, global, health and social sciences, and STEM. And this year, what we really tried to do with the staff, when we talked about writing curriculum and putting our courses together, we wanted to tie in this year, because we really didn't last year, our courses with our educational competencies. So we really were trying to tie where we're going with the next-gen learning into May Term for All. So we asked all teachers to look at our global competencies and which one of these competencies would match with your course.
So in terms of student engagement and student performance, you can see that on the transcripts, May Term is indicated as a P or NC for no credit. Of the 4,972 grades submitted, only 3.7% were NC. So this represents a passing rate of 96.3%.
So we did ask students last year and this year, and this year's data is right in front of you, can you give us some feedback on courses? And some students took the survey one time. We asked them to take it per class that they were enrolled. So some students were in one class, it was a four-block class, so they maybe took the survey once. If they were in the theater class, or if they were in scuba, that was a four-block class. And if they were in one-block classes, they may have taken the survey four times. So that's why you see the number, there was a total of 1,635 surveys completed, and the results are right there for you to view as to this year's student survey result.
One of the themes in the student responses was that they would like to have more access to more classes. They could, as you heard Melanie just explain, they could take one class per block, or they could take an extended class that's more than one block, but they could not take more than four classes. Another concern that they had was that the block is a longer period of time, and so if we could go from a block to maybe a five-period, then they would be able to take more classes and the class period would be quite as long.
The other, should EHS continue with May Term for All for the last six days? The 15%, the noes, there were many saying, well, let's just start summer earlier. There was, well, we finished our finals, we're out, and then there were seniors that took that, that were really, that didn't do Senior May Term, that May Term for All might not be the avenue for them. So we really found that the kids that didn't find the value, those were kind of the themes that we saw in the survey.
In the registration process, we gave juniors and then sophomores priority in selecting classes, and the last group to select their classes was seniors, and so they may not be, they may have not have gotten their first choice, and so maybe not as positive about the courses they took.
So, this year and last year, there were different themes of registration. So last year, I think the dissatisfaction with registration was it was a new process, and we registered kids in a very short window last year. So we opened it up on a Tuesday for juniors, a Thursday for sophomores, and then the next Monday for seniors, and that was a lot of registration in a very short period of time, and it really clogged up the system. And so that was last year's main student feedback. This year, we had a three-week registration period. We had juniors do it one week, the sophomores were 10 days later, and then the seniors were about seven days after the sophomores. We did registration at 7:00 in the evening, and we chose Wednesdays because we didn't want to conflict with sporting events. Let me go back, sorry. Last year, when we opened up registration, it was during the school day, and teachers felt they were losing instruction time because kids were trying to register. So we moved the registration to the evenings, and we tried to do it on a Wednesday night because we were trying to stay clear of our school calendar, per se, but I think the Wednesdays also conflicted with some of the church things going on, and I think we, I will take that blame. I think we may have done it on Ash Wednesday, which was completely my bad. But, so we kept it on Wednesday, so I'm not sure that we would continue that. I think the 7:00 evening registration was preferred with staff members because it didn't interfere with instruction, however.
Can I just ask some ideas?
I noticed that only 121 12th graders responded. Do you have any idea of what?
So, not many seniors are responding to this survey because this is the May Term for All survey. So the seniors really were participating in their Senior May Term. So the kids that, the seniors that participated in the survey were doing the May Term for All, so that's why that number was so small.
So we're just kind of laying out some possible changes for next year. We do take the feedback seriously from staff, from parents, and from students, and are taking a look at how to fine-tune this program going forward, what it will look like. And we don't have concrete answers at this point, but what we're looking at is additional college and career skills-focused courses, partnering more so with local universities and businesses to allow more opportunities, more travel opportunities, and also an alternate opportunity for seniors who are not doing Senior May Term, so that they're not necessarily in the courses with the sophomores and juniors. So, and that is not yet defined, maybe connected to service learning.
Oops. Sorry. Right there. I don't have my glasses on. Okay. Is that it?
That completes our report, presentation.
Okay. So, yes, thank you.
And now, we're here to take questions.
So I had a question, I know it is in the presentation, but when I was looking at the actual report, I noticed that actually the lowest positive response rates came from staff, and so I'm wondering, because if kids, of course, are saying they like it, their parents are saying they support it and they'd like to see it continue, when staff isn't, I'm wondering what can we do to improve that experience for staff and hopefully get them as happy as our kids?
That's a great question. And to be honest, it's a concern of ours. This comes at the end of a school year when staff are busy, staff are stressed. We're asking a lot of our teachers right now in the transition, both in construction and in curriculum development, and looking at new scheduling and looking at bringing onboard the ninth grade. There's a lot going on, on teachers' plates right now, and so I think that is part of what we hear. The other is, you know, this isn't why I'm a teacher. You know, that complaint came through, I'm a teacher because I wanted to be a teacher in my curricular area. And so now I'm teaching outside of my curricular area, and so a couple people were saying that. But then, it depends on the staff member and it depends on the course. We only had about half of our staff respond to the survey. And when you have half of your members respond to a survey, oftentimes those are the people with strong feelings about it. And so what we want to do is just provide as much support as possible, planning time, and do whatever we can to make this a great experience for our staff as well.
We did lose, we lost a planning day within our schedule, and I believe that hurt staff in their planning and their executing of what they wanted to do as well. So we're really trying to look at our calendar to say, how can we bring back time for staff to be able to put that in and take that off their plate right before May Term?
Is, do any of the staff, as we move forward, and this becomes a more recurring item, do any of the staff get to repeat their courses so that maybe there isn't as much of the planning as they had to do the first time as they invented their course?
So, I would say there were some staff members, last year and the first year of that pilot, that weren't a part of May Term for All. And last year, it was their first year, and I would say those staff members had a lot more anxiety and more struggle getting onboard and knowing what to expect. I think the staff members who found their courses and found like this was my niche, really found that this year, the second year teaching it, they were much better, they were prepared, they spent that first day doing a little bit more getting-to-know-you type activities. I think about our college essay writing, you know, that's the second year of that class, and those teachers were really in control, and those, you know, kids wrote really great essays. So I do think that's a piece of it, trying to find what that niche is with the staff, and if you teach it again, you're more willing to do that. And if you went to our Theater for All, which was amazing, Jess Frelick, who ran that, you know, second year row, she would do that feed and payer because it was so rewarding. It was amazing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there an opportunity to offer a sample of classes that are already part of our curriculum, and this would be probably a best support for our 10th graders and in another year, our 9th graders, so that they can explore? Here are some classes that are available in areas I might not have considered just signing up for. AP Physical Universe, any AP course if they weren't sure that the challenge would be a good match for them, a foreign language, or, you know, a subject that they might not have been as comfortable exploring. And I recognize the disconnect between registration happening in February, May Term for All is at the end of the year, but it's curriculum that teachers would be teaching in their own subject area, and it's that explore option we don't have another option for.
That's a great idea. One of the pillars in developing May Term was to offer students an experience beyond what they could experience in the traditional curriculum. And so it wasn't the direction we started with, but I think that kind of thinking is part of what we're looking at in the future, in that how do we make not only this a great experience for students, but a fulfilling experience for all of our staff members? Not to say that it wasn't, for many of them, it was a great experience, and we heard that as well. But we want to have everybody happy with what they're doing for the last few days.
Well, I think it also could inform their choices. It's a way to allow planning that isn't possible in any other context, to explore an area, a subject, that the student might not take.
And we did have Gavin McLean, this year, taught forensics for the first time as a subject, and he also ran it as a May Term class. So last, in our pilot year, our first pilot year, he ran it as a pilot, thought this is great, I can build off of this for his course, and then for May Term, he did a Forensics 2.0. And so he was building on that within his curriculum. So we do have that option, I think we could explore that more with our staff members.
Returning to registration issues, this may be a technological issue, but I think if you could allow students to rank their choices and guarantee every student that they're going to get at least one of their top three, it would hugely improve satisfaction with both the process and the courses, because I certainly know there are students who did not get any of their top choices, including juniors who supposedly got higher priority. So I think that would really help the program.
I think, again, I think we're working with, now that we have a new information system, I'm not sure what we can take on with that registration. We worked within the ARUC system within community education. I think we can explore that. I agree, because I think if students have more of their choices, it's going to be a better experience for them, as well as the staff members.
Also seems, if Steve's listening, like a good test of personalized learning and how we deal with scheduling as we get deeper into personalized learning.
I think, absolutely. And so I think we've been actually pretty innovative with the May Term scheduling, worked fairly well as partnership between the high school, TIES, ARUCs, that's Community Ed. So it's actually, we made three systems kind of sing and dance together in unison that hadn't been done before. So that was a pretty powerful statement of collaboration. But going forward, we are putting in place some collaboration tools, the Flex Schedular that we are going to be piloting in the middle schools next year, we think might have utility to help facilitate this. And this will be something that the students know how to use, and so when it comes time to registration, there's not forgotten usernames and passwords and things like that. And then, I think it's an issue of capacity for the classes. If we have enough classes, enough teachers teaching them, then we're going to be able to offer the first, second, and third priorities for those students.
And that is something we've already been discussing, in that some of the classes that are incredibly popular, how do we create more sections of those classes? Because they do fill quickly.
So one of the things we talked about early on when we approved this was that kids could incrementally step through. So let's say they've decided on a career path or a real interest in a career path as a sophomore. Are there opportunities to pursue either individual internships or other things, or is that limited just to seniors? Or is there a path there that they can do building blocks over the three years?
That is where I suspect we will land in moving forward. There is discussion right now about Senior May Term being more of a capstone-type-of-project based work, and the May Terms for freshmen, sophomores, and juniors leading up to that, progressively building on that work, so that you've laid the foundation for your Senior May Term before your senior year even starts. And so, yes, that's a great question, and that is a direction that we're looking to move forward.
And I realize the logistics are incredible to make that happen, so, but thank you.
This is fantastic. I think it's a great segue to personalized learning in general. I saw in some of the feedback, you know, you push back against some of the criticism from parents, we're looking for more just bread and butter, academic-type work, and saying that this is actually core to our ultimate mission, educating students. There was a section in here where you mentioned students looking for opportunities that weren't necessarily there, neuroscience or law enforcement. Have you looked into bringing, you know, I know we push students out into the community, but also bringing community members in for May Term in particular, if not the whole thing, just for a day or a portion of the day, have students present to an expert and then have some sort of back and forth? Is that an option that's been explored?
It certainly has. We've worked really, we've worked with Community Ed to bring in a lot of experts into our classes. In our, we have a class called Career Exploration, and we bring in community members all the time. Our first year, we did have a law enforcement class, which we ran through the high school, and last year, our officer, Busalis, was not able to make that work. Now, with some of those things, again, in looking forward, can we partner? We tried really hard with Hennepin Technical College, and they have a law enforcement, and they have culinary arts, and they have automotive, and we're trying to really work and partner with them a little bit to offer some of those classes that kids want. The neuroscience, you know, we have to get them in the right class to get that connection, but we certainly want to increase what we're doing with our community members and use anybody that we can to help our kids learn.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, members of the board.
We are going to go back in our agenda to recognition of the Edina High School girls' golf team.
They're all up golfing, right?
That's right.
Well, we have a coach that has done amazing things in the program, Mark, come on up. Mark has been part of the golf pro- Mark has been part of the golf program at Edina High School for more years than we can count. How many years is it?
Eighteen.
Eighteen. For those golf junkies, we know last night, or yesterday was the British Open and we saw a 63 shot. I would say what the girls accomplished the first day of the state tournament, accomplishing less than 300 strokes as a team, is probably rates, in my mind, as an accomplishment at that level. I mean, that is amazing. It was an amazing season. But talk to that, because I know that was a statistic that you really did have a target on for you wanted your girls to accomplish. And talk a little bit about the season as a work coach and maybe just highlight some of that.
Yeah, I think a couple of things came to my mind, you know, as, as a golf coach, watching any kind of a team that can shoot under 300, which means you're shooting about 75 on average, which is pretty remarkable for any kind of a player. But there have been teams, Minnewaska, Red Wing, a couple of other teams that over the years have done that. And it's always been a, kind of a really strong indication of how good your team is. And so, with a, with a really strong senior group of girls that we had this year, along with, literally, I had, I had 11 girls playing on our varsity team. And any of these girls could have played on any team in the state of Minnesota. And so, when the season began, it became very obvious that our top five were going to be our top five. They were shooting underneath 80 on a regular basis. And so, it became trying to find one person that could represent that last or the sixth spot. And so, we came close a couple of times to 300, but not quite there. But to, you know, to do it at the state tournament on the first day. In fact, Christine Portillo, who was one of our seniors, was coming down the 17th hole and she was actually five or six under par, which is like unheard of. And had a little bit of a mishap. The golf gods giveth and they taketh, as I told her. And she'd gotten a really great break early on and had a couple of stumbling blocks, but never gave up. And I get, that was our, our mode all years, to, you know, to be, be in the moment, be present, make sure that we had great attitudes. And when it all came together, I mean, what a better time to do it than at the state high school tournament. So, to shoot. And in fact, in both days, we were throwing out scores in the 70s, which is, again, very uncharacteristic, especially for girls golf. But girls golf, over my 18 years, you know, we were very fortunate. We could get one person to break 80. And to get, you know, more than six or seven girls that can do it on a regular basis is just a tribute to what they have done over the years and, and how girls golf has just emerged as a, just a marquee sport in the state of Minnesota.
And Coach, we know that you brought on retirement this spring. But again, I know golf is a key passion to you, but so is students and, and learning. How did this tie together for you with your coaching responsibilities? If you can just touch on that.
You know, I, I've been very fortunate. Edina's been really good to me. I've been a teacher here at Edina for 20 years. I've enjoyed the students. I've enjoyed the camaraderie with my colleagues. I've had great support, not only from the administration and my colleagues, but probably most importantly, I think, as everybody says, it's the parents. I think when you are a teacher and a coach, you really get to see all sides of the family dynamics that come place. And, and to me, that is what, whenever spring came around, it was, a lot of people get really more nervous and worked up. And to me, it was always the exact opposite. It was so much fun to be able to go out and spend time with family, watch young kids compete. And then, you know, as people are trying to get their finals and things done, I had kind of already done that ahead of time. So, you know, it, it's, it's hard to balance. The month of April, I will, I, I won't, I, I won't say much about it because it gets pretty stressful and my wife always hates that month. Because with AP tests coming up and the tournaments and final exams and all the stuff that goes on at the end of the school year, it gets a little hectic. So, I think this spring should be a little bit less stressful in my life. But I'll miss it. I, I will miss it, but I, I also know that opportunities have come my way to try other things. And I've had opportunities to work in Minneapolis Public Schools. I've worked in the private schools and, again, the past 20 years at Edina. And it's time to just take a year off and kind of see what I want to do. And then, I don't know if I'm going to go back to work, but my honey-do list keeps growing. So, I've got to keep working on that.
And how, can you name the players that were part of that team?
Absolutely. We were very fortunate. We had three seniors that were on our varsity team. Hannah Hankinson has been with me since she was a seventh grader. And, and she has been just a dynamic player. She was the Athena Award selection for our school, great representation. Her and the other captain, Katie Engelking. Not only were the captains of our golf team, but they were also part of our tennis program, which, again, has a, a very strong impact. And then, our third senior, Christine Portillo, really, in her own mind, came out and said, I'm going to play for the University of Minnesota. And sure enough, she'll be doing that this year. Along with those three seniors, we have Grace Keller, who is currently, I think, at the FBS trip right now with the kids. So, she's actually away from golf. She's a junior. She's already committed to the University of Minnesota, so she should be playing Division I golf. Hannah, as I mentioned before, is playing at Augustana, which is an outstanding program. Isabel Ouyang also is part of the golf tennis connection. So, there's something going on there. But I think it's that mentality that both Steve and I believe in in terms of getting to know the kids and making sure that there's a purpose and enjoying the time that they're having out there that really makes our two squads so remarkable. And then, this year, our sixth was Janice Kim. She was an eighth grader. But I also had other players. Kendall Olson, Emily Kratz, Joanna Kim, Janice's sister. Missing one of their two. But all of them, they all contributed throughout the year. And so, it's been, it's been a great ride for the last, three of the last four years we've made to the state tournaments and three of the four, we've won it. So, I have no doubt that they can continue on, even though I won't be there. And I wish them the best.
Great. Coach, we want to get a quick congratulations from them.
Congratulations.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
And thank you, Edina. Thank you.
Next, we are on, we're on to the wellness update.
Ask Margot and Randy to give us a quick update on the world of student wellness.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Superintendent Dressen, and School Board. We just have a short update on our annual student wellness and what we did throughout the year. We comply with Policy 715 and 533. And what first comes to mind in regard to student wellness is the food and nutrition aspect. But over the last number of years, we have expanded that. And our policy is, is broad in terms of other areas, nutrition, education, physical activity, and communication with families. So, overall, student health and wellness has been a topic of our conversation in the last couple of years. In 1516, obviously, we try to continue to move forward and make progress on meeting the guidelines in the policy. We implemented Smart Sacs, which is the new federal regulations in terms of à la carte type items or any items sold between the start of the school day and a half hour after the school day. And Chartwell's, our current provider, was of great assistance in helping us through that. And in their own offerings, à la carte, but then also helping even our kids' club, how do we source products that meet those requirements? And so, they've been key, key players in helping us. And some of our student groups also that sell during the day. Focus more on locally grown and produced foods. And also combined further down here on the slide, is with our commodity dollars, our USDA dollars, purchasing more fruits and vegetables versus some of the other types of items that you can purchase. Big hits in, in the serving lines with those fruits and vegetables and the local, locally grown produce. And a big hit for the high school was the made-to-order salad bar. We had heard about that in the high school presentations in the spring, that the students really wanted made-to-order salad bar. And it went over fabulously. And we're going to make a couple tweaks to that, but continue offering that. The, Chartwell's does promote nutrition education through the Simply Good platform. It's, it's their platform. We expanded breakfast throughout the, the schools. And depending on the school, we tailor. It might be in the classroom for kindergartners, for example, or it might be a grab and go. We work with the principal. We work with the actual facility and how does that work and where students come in and enter. We had had superfood tastings. We also, and we'll continue those. It's really more the parent representatives for the site wellness committees partner with Chartwell's to have food tastings. So that if there is something, a new type of food that we're adding or just learning about different types of culturally foods or different offerings, different fruits, different vegetables, students get a chance to try that before it's on the, on the lunch line or the food line. And we had our third annual Student Wellness Challenge. And I'm sure Randy will talk a little bit more about that. But we tried this year to expand to have a cultural focus in terms of different cultures have different ways of promoting overall health and wellness. And so, how, how do we bring that into our wellness fair?
Good evening. For the Wellness Challenge, we had a number of students from the high school who were paired with community experts. And those community experts and the students planned stations. And then, younger students came through and rotated through those stations. It was on a Saturday in April. And they learned about how physical movement and how nutrition impacts your brain and primes it for learning. And how through nutrition and exercise, you can change your brain by the minute to make you more prepared for learning and to make you a better learner overall. So, a great opportunity for our high school students to be leaders in this area. A great opportunity for some community members to give back to our school system and a fun partnership in working with our high school students. And then, a great opportunity to develop, to develop wellness champions in our young students. So, a very fun, very fun day and a fun set of activities on those days. As we roll into next year, we want to continue to grow our nutrition education, including the nutrition education for student athletes. 20% of your calories that you consume go to fueling your brain. And so, when kids are thinking about how diet is such a big part of not only physical performance, but also mental performance. And it's really critical that if our students and our student athletes are going to be at peak performance, whether it's in activity or whether it's learning, nutrition is such an important key component of that. Two servings of fruits, four servings of vegetables a day is the, is, is our goal in terms of what we're after. We know from past data from our Minnesota Health Survey that we don't quite hit that limit with a lot of students. Vegetables are a great way to build immunity and to help the immune system. And so, in terms of wellness messages and education, these are great opportunities to educate our kids about the importance of nutrition. We want to continue to expand superfood taste testing. So, we know that the more variety you have in your diet, the better that is for your brain and your body and your overall health. We want to implement a chef-to-school program, which is about affiliating professional chefs with schools to be able to do education with parents, with teachers, and with students about how to prepare meals, how to make meals tasty, but, but still nutritious. We want to continue to partner with our Go Green team to help decrease food waste. Sometimes, we see students who order a meal and they really like the entree, but maybe not all the extras. And so, they go back and they buy another entree. And so, they fill up by having double entrees. And then, all the fruits and the vegetables end up in the garbage. And so, we really want to educate our young people in how to take advantage of those really nutritious foods too and to consume what's on your plate before you go and get additional foods. And so, just trying to, through a lot of these education pieces, also help them decrease the amount of food that we're wasting on a daily basis. To increase our healthy grab and go options at the secondary level, we know students are incredibly busy in this district and they have so many activities. And sometimes, they may not have time to sit down and grab a complete meal. But if they can grab a healthy option and take that with them and eat that, eat that on the go, then at times, that's a, that's a really good choice for them to make. And to continue to build awareness around our Nutrislice tool, which is an app that can be downloaded for parents and students. And it gives all kinds of nutrition information about food that's on our menu. It can provide information about foods that, you know, if, if a student might have an allergy or they might not have a like for a certain type of food or they want to see the sugar content in something. You can, and you can, from the dropdown menu, enter in different options and it'll show what is in the different kinds of foods. It also shows a picture of the food that's being served and shows what that nutrition tray looks like for that day. So, it's a great option. It's a national app and it's something that we've received some pretty good feedback from our parents on. So, again, trying to move in the area of continued education around nutrition, continuing to grow student wellness champions at our early elementary years so that they continue to take that with them and habit forming as they go through the school. And then, understand how students can change their brain by the minute through nutrition, through physical activity. So, it primes their brain for learning and in the end, makes them a better learner. And with that, we'll take any questions that you may have.
The app is awesome. It's really quick, fast way. And when you have kids who live on these things, it's a great way for them to look up what's for lunch and stuff.
That's great.
All right. Thank you very much.
One, one more, a little off topic, but I've heard complaints about the lack of pricing in the à la carte. Kids have no idea what they're spending or what they're buying. So, just to want to throw that out there. And I know there's some issues around that, but I think we need to figure out how to overcome them. Or if nothing else, put it on the app so they can see what they're spending.
We have heard that before. And so, we're exploring options in how to be able to do that. Do we, and how it's listed as they go through the line. It depends where the à la carte is listed and that kind of thing. So, we are exploring options there. I'm not sure the flexibility of the app, because as Randy said, that's a, a national app. But we may internally have some options there.
Even just priceless hanging on the wall somewhere. Just so the kids, after they bought something, they realize, hey, is this two bucks or is this five bucks? They don't know.
And especially at the start of school. Eventually, they, they get used to what some of that is or even the price ranges for certain things. But we hear more about it at the beginning of the school year till both parents and students figure it out.
Well, and maybe the other simple option is that they could see the pricing as it gets rung up because they don't even see that. Sort of, they don't know if they had a $2 lunch or a $10 lunch.
Right. We, we've actually talked about this, even when we were going through the process of choosing our vendor a couple of years ago, that part of the educational process for our kids too is to see point-of-sale prices as well as when they check out. You know, to be told, you know, your meal today was X. So, I, I mean, I continue to promote that as just an educational piece, teaching our kids to be good consumers. But definitely, we, I mean, somehow, we should have point-of-sale pricing because it, it's important that the kids know what they're spending because it's usually mom and dad's money.
Any other questions? Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is Next Generation Construction.
Yep. Just again, update the board on our construction. We're making very good progress with the work that we're doing. Summer, we'll soon be accepting bids for Valley View Roof. And then, we'll be moving into approving, or accepting bids on our elementary project. But the camp, the work being done at both the east campus and the west campus is moving along nicely. And then, we'll be moving us right on through summer construction into spring construction in '17, with a very busy summer of 2017, where you can see all the sites will be worked on. In the fall, we'll have a majority of the sites completed, including hopefully, our transportation building as well as then moving into some additional work to be done at Valley View and the high school. And then, in the spring of 2018, we'd finish off our elementaries at Creek Valley and Highlands and then conclude our projects. So, we are on, on, on the correct schedule and watching the budget very closely. Again, as I mentioned, the west campus, we're really working heavy on the foundations. So, it's a lot of earthwork here. The high school commons, both the stairways and the finishings are being installed. And so, that'll be ready. So, the high school will have a remodeled commons area. The lower field continues to get, major work being done there as we prepare for turf fields in the spring of 2017. We're starting now on the north side of the hill where our gymnasium space will be is in the next area of construction. And then, as I mentioned, the Valley View roof replacement will begin in August. The east campus, we're busy with turf fields. The turf field has been laid here at Coleman Field and also preparing for that. Parking lot resurfacing is being completed. And we're getting the roof repairs done at ECC. We're continuing to look at sale of the current transportation building and site as that is going to be an area that we can trade out, as it were, for the purchase of the new land. And we're continuing to take a look at the design work around that. And then, as I mentioned, early August is Countryside Cornelian Concord bids. As it relates to lead- As it relates to leadership plans, the board will act later tonight on our priorities as it relates to the three major areas, personalized learning, our comprehensive programming, and then finally partnerships. We've talked about all those various initiatives over the past several months, but again, these are our priorities. They're strategically placed, and we have actions that'll help us advance work of personalized learning and a seamless system that values the role of partnership with the home and the school and the community, working together and going well beyond that. And so that's a lot of our planning is again in '16, '17, but the fall of 2017, many of those initiatives we've been working on since our strategic plan was launched in 2011, will be ready to launch. Again, much of this is driven by the ability that we'll have with our facilities, including bringing the ninth grade over to the high school. We'll launch in the fall 2017 and then begin looking at what the next strategic initiatives are for that vision of really reaching the mission of all of us being successful with all of our learners. As we look to 2017, 1617, what it is going to take is a strong work of collective energies and collective expertise coming together and problem solving. And so we know there are differences of ideas and opinions and perspectives, those are all going to be valued as we look at some of the initiatives that we're working on, everything from school start time to curriculum offerings, to some of the staffing plans as they evolve, to our next steps as it relates to technology just across the board. But what we know as a community, we are strong collectively, and collectively, we can make some great things happen. And so our theme this year will really be building on that partnership effort. I will pause at this point if there are questions about construction or about some of our strategic work going forward. The board will be acting at a discussion level later this evening on the specific actions.
Any questions?
Just want to ask a general question for, on behalf of the community. If community members have questions about sites, access to sites at different times of the year, particularly this transition between late summer and early fall, what's our best resource?
So the best resource is our website, where they can go and place an email. We also have a hotline, again, calling the district web phone, and we will get back to them immediately. And when I say we get back to them, it is that best decision-making where the action occurs. So if it's a contractor who needs to be talking to that community member about it, or a coach, or a teacher, or administrator, we will get back to them directly and continue to keep them informed. It's, our neighbors have been very, very patient with us and very, you know, responsive to being flexible and being good neighbors during this time of construction, and we really respect how they've been able to respond to that. We continue to work closely with the city on meeting the ordinances and the requirements that they have as a city around construction, and we watch very carefully to try to make sure we be good, we are good neighbors through this process. So it is about partnership and coming together, so we'd encourage people to make contacts as necessary.
Any other questions? All right, let's go on to our next agenda item. It's actually Leadership Action Plan again.
Yep, and so the board has a specific action plan. This is our yearly action plan, which identifies specifically as it relates to those three different areas, different activities that need to occur. We talked about these at length at our June board meeting. Again, they've been in place, and we're really moving through learning to an implementation to a standardized phase. You can see some of the work is moving into standardized, including some of the ways we are working with technology to move that forward. But we know over the next two to three years, we think we will be standardizing. As we do that, we also know that we'll be exiting some things, try to get again a stronger focus on our priorities as we move to this next generation of learning. Does identify different staff members at a leadership level who are responsible for carrying out those actions. And throughout the year, we'll be updating the board, as well as the community, on activities going on, including decisions that are going to be rendered. So I'd encourage the board to support that as an action plan, and then we'll take it for action at the August board meeting.
Any questions on the action plan?
Just a lot going on, pretty exciting.
All right, next is school board agendas. We don't have meetings, right?
No. So we have agendas for the year set up. Again, it's a great place for the community to go if they're wondering what the pacing of some of our work is and what will be rolling forward for board action. It does spell out from June, July to June, everything that the board has planned at their regular school board meetings, as well as some of the work sessions. Many of them are routine or things that come up every year. Some are bigger issues and some are smaller. But then we also interject all of our strategic planning initiatives that need to come back into the board for board action. And this, again, is a routine item that we take care of every year in July.
And we usually end up adding work sessions after this is approved, if my memory is correct.
That's correct.
Any questions on the school board agendas? We're on to policy review. I think Rick, you get a break here, and Regina, you take over.
I will talk about those policies that are on the docket for discussion. So 600 policy, the 607, the special, oh, excuse me.
So policies for discussion. 607, accommodations and services for students with special needs. This is the result of recommendation by a study that the legislature launched, and so at any rate, or no, that's a little bit later on. So just special accommodation. The appendix is clarified, as is the policy for better language. And the appendices one and two that have been part of the policy have been pulled out into a handbook for 504 students. For 633, specific thanks to Donna Roper for her intense review and revision on this particular language. There's a lot of new language in this policy to address research in general. And then appendices have been clarified as to which appendix applies to which policy. Workload limits. This is where I started to speak to a policy that has new language that's a result of a commissioned study, just to take a look at workload limits for certain special education teachers. The district does have some policies in place. This provides some standard language to go with that. Record retention, a lot of work done by Stacy Guyer on this one to take a look at language that we have not had in place before to address how long things should be kept and when and how they can be let go of when that particular period of time has gone by. 901, community education services. It's revised for clarity and brevity. And probably one of the bigger changes, just in section four, the language that refers to the Community Education Services Group changing from a board to an advisory council, which is the way that that particular group functions. Partnerships. This is a policy that's been discussed by the policy committee for quite some time. We're bringing it out this evening because we'd appreciate any kind of feedback that this group might have as a first read, and then we expect that we'll go back and give it some more thought. So if there's any notes that anybody has on any of these, we can take it back for our next meeting.
I had a question on the 633. Particularly there, I noticed we honed in on student research, and I'm thinking that this came out of probably, you know, kids doing projects and wanting to do research. Can you just, for the, for public and for parents and kids potentially listening, can you explain how this might affect their work and how they should utilize it in future, in more layman's terms?
The general awareness is to be aware of just the permissions that need to be requested, and then a focus on the educational outcome of the research. Here's the reason for the research. Here is how data will be protected and individual identities protected, and then also a voluntary nature for the study. So that's some primary guidelines.
Regina, on 607, the first one, should there be a reference to this new handbook? Or so, how does, how does that, somebody understand that resource is available?
That's a good point. I'll take the question back. I don't have a specific answer for that, but, and I know that there has been a lot of good work done in the Special Education Services Department to take a look at handbooks for different user groups and to make sure that that's communicated, but it does make sense to link some of that back into policy language. So yes, we can take that back.
Quick question on 636. That says it's driven by MSBA. Is that underlying a statute that drives the requirement of that new policy?
Yes.
So most of that's probably statutory language.
That is statutory language, correct.
Other questions on the policies?
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, we move to our action items. The first action item is the CES Employee Guidebook. Can I get a motion to approve the 2016-18 Guidebook of Professional?
Yeah, put them all together.
Oh, you're going to put them all together? All right. We've got four. CES Employee Guidebook, CES Coordinator Guidebook, SAC Guidebook, and Salaries SEIU. Can I get a motion to approve those four guidebooks?
So moved.
Second.
And do we have a presentation at all on this?
I'm ready.
Thank you.
So the first recommendation is for the Community Education Employees Group, and that entails, for their guidebook, it entails a 1.4% salary increase for year one and year two. And for health contribution from the district, it will be 3% year one and then zero year two. For those employees who have been with us for 15 years or more, they will get one additional day of vacation. And we currently have a 1% match from the district for the tax-deferred savings plan, and it will increase to 2% or no more than $2,000. These changes are within the parameters that were defined by the school board in May, and the increase is 6.8% over two years, or $426,100. I will entertain any questions. Okay. The next one is the Community Education Services Coordinators. And that guidebook includes 2% salary increase for year one, 2% increase for year two. There will be a 3% increase for health services, or health benefits, for year one and zero for year two. And their retirement incentive will increase from $500 to $600 per year of service in edine public schools. Again, it is within the parameters that were defined by the board, and that is a total of a 5%, 5.7% increase, or $32,791. Any questions?
Third one?
Okay. The third one is Superintendent's Advisory Council for 2016-18. That is a guidebook as well. And the salary increase is 2% year one and 2% year two. There is a, for health insurance contribution from the district, it will increase by three years, three, excuse me, 3% year one and then zero year two. And then the tax-deferred matching contribution will increase from $2,000 to $2,500, and then beginning July 1 of 2017, it will increase to $3,000 per year. There has been no increase in that area for quite some time. And there were some adjustments as well that were approved by the Board HR Committee, and including the salary adjustments, as you can see, and there is support from the committee for this approval. Any questions? Okay, and the last one is contract, and it is with the SEIU group, which includes our custodians and bus drivers. And that is a 2% increase year one and 2% increase year two. There was, we were a little behind with some of the salaries for mechanics, so there is an increase of 25 cents per hour year one, and then there will be another 25 cents per hour increase for year two, effective July 1. The district contribution for health insurance will increase by 3% year one and 3% year two. The boilers license and pool certification stipends will increase by $2 per year. And there are various stipends, so it ranges from like $9 a month to $11 or $15, so there will be a $2 increase for each of those, effective 2000, of this year, July 1, 2016, and then there will be another $2 per month increase for, effective July 1 of 2017. And our substitute bus drivers is included in this particular contract, and their stipend will increase to 60 cents per hour. And the other part is that those who qualify to receive an additional, some will qualify to receive an additional 1% tax-deferred savings plan. So currently, it's at 1%, and it will increase to 2%. These changes are within the guidelines as defined by the board as well, which is a 5% increase over two years, or $391,952. I will entertain questions on any of the four, along with Margot, who also was at the table.
And so, Margot, these all work within your budgeting parameters?
I will work with them in the budget, yes.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the four agreements just gone through, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Next is...
Just want to add, great work getting these done this early in the year, so thank you.
Next is a motion relating to the long-term facilities maintenance budget. It is the resolution to approve ISD 273 Long-Term Facility Maintenance Program Budget and authorize the inclusion of those projects in the district's application for long-term facility maintenance revenue. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Gwen, are you?
Margot.
Margot? Somebody?
If Gwen wants to take it, I can...
Gwen's welcome to take it.
No, thank you.
So we have discussed this both at finance and facilities. Typically, what we focus more on is the actual 10-year plan in Facilities Committee. Now with the new requirement of long-term facility maintenance, this format with a revenue projection and also expenditure projection is required, it requires board approval to move forward. In June, we had the same type of information for 287. They have the requirement also, so we need, do need to submit this to the department by July 31st. So it includes the overall 10-year plan that the board has been working with. It's just formatting it in the way that the State Department needs. So I would ask, answer any questions you have and ask for your approval.
Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Next motion is relating to the 400 series. Can I get a motion to approve policies 408, 409, 410, 411, 412, 413, 414, and 415?
So moved.
Any second?
Second.
Regina, any changes in these since we saw them last?
There are no changes since the June 13th meeting. I do want to thank Stacy Guyer and Sarah Shandell for managing these policies. In large part, they had statutory updates that they recorded well.
Any questions, anybody? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Next is policy 608. Can I get a motion to approve policy 608?
So moved.
Second.
Regina, anything new on 608?
Nothing new.
Any questions on 608? Hearing none, all in favor of approving policy 608, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. We are on to information. Oh, no, we're not. We are to Community Engagement Software and Facilitation Agreement. Can I get a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Second.
All right, is there any presenter?
So I will do the presenting. Susan Broad is at her National Communications Conference, which is where we learned about this product. It's an engagement product that will, again, seek a more creative way and a more inclusive way of getting feedback and insights from our community members. We can also use this tool with our staff. It's more in, just-in-time type of service that blends both social media and web presence with data collection. And we've been looking probably for the last almost year, a different tool that is more lively than that single phone call survey, or depending on people to respond to some type of survey monkey. And this is a tool that has been well-received nationally. It's just making its way into the Minnesota arena, as some schools are just starting to take a look at this. And it's something in the HR Committee we talked about, and talked about this need to grow our interactions and to get a better sense of engagement. to, to grow our interactions, and to get a better sense of engagement when we're working with community members. And so this is a tool that Susan Brod and her team have researched and are recommending. The change financially, it's not a new expenditure, it's a reauthorization of funds that we currently have. So this would be basically a funding transfer within her budget, so that annual survey that we've done as a district would probably not do that, and use this instead as a tool. And, you know, I know there were some board members who were a part of the webinar that talked a little bit about this, and the product, and how it works, and I would defer to them for any other details, but...
Well, I, I guess my, my concern about it was looking at, looking at it, and then having it replace that survey. I, I like that survey. I find that it's very scientific and well-presented. And when I look at this, I don't, I don't quite understand the controls about how we're getting a, a good representation. And so I, I see this in conjunction with that, but I have concerns about supplanting it.
So if, if there's a need for us to do that, we do have that funding source. I mean, we'll just go back to, so in other words, if there's a need for that community survey, we can also take a look at that, especially when we get around the corner for where we're seeking input on a referendum or something of that sort. So that tool remains available to us as well. This is just a compliment that we need, feel like we need something to go a little bit deeper, and this is our option, and it's a transition year that we'll have to build our budget accordingly from.
When I looked at the, the details and the description, I noticed they're listing out how many times we can do these things. I don't remember that being part of the, the webinar, that we were limited. Does that mean that there's, you know, only two surveys that they assist us with, or can, can the communications department jump in and do other ones on their own? I was just...
So it's a partnership, you know, and I, I think Susan feels pretty comfortable that we'll be able to get more than just that. I mean, that's what, that's legally we committed to, you know, through the contract piece, but the partnership and the relationship we have with them, we feel that this is going to be our lively data point.
Okay. And if things didn't go well, would we be able to get out sooner than the three?
Are there any other questions? Any other information? No? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Now we are on to information. Any information items?
Nothing other than presented as appendixes, and the Leadership Action Plan from last year, which highlights, again, what the board is moving forward to act on for 16, 17, highlights the 15, 16 action plan, the progress we made with that.
And sadly, we're over halfway through summer, Regina.
Sarah, Sarah, Sarah. We have, we have almost half still to go.
I know.
That's the way to look at it. All right. Any other updates? Anybody want committee reports? Hearing none, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.